Twenty one, twenty twenty four, five thirty P. M. Kathy, can you give me a roll call?
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilwoman Bruceford.
Here.
Councilman Bruceford.
Here.
Councilman Tuchet is asking Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Very loud for him.
Having your forum present, I'm gonna go ahead with the prayer. Follow my lead, Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy name is holy, and thy name is eternal. And thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Thank you. And Councilman Tony, where do you lead us in the pledge?
The United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any public comments on any agenda items before we move forward? As a standard practice, we don't have any presentations, but we usually limit those to seven minutes. And items of discussion, three minutes, just to keep the agenda rolling. Hearing no public comments, we'll move on to approval of budget reports. Item number one, to approve the April twenty twenty four budget to actual report.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business, item number one, to approve the renewal for health insurance from U M R and stock loss coverage from Tokyo Marine H C C from July one, twenty twenty four through July, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Mr. Lloyd, you have the floor. Lloyd Campisi.
Thank you. Always a pleasure to come and support the council. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I had the opportunity to visit with the insurance chairman and the staff, Ms. Falk, in regards to the renewal of our group health insurance plan. As you know, the renewal date is, our anniversary is July one. And we have two of the providers that we use in our group health insurance plan to make it work. One of them is Tokyo Marine H C C, and that's our reinsurer. The reinsurer pays every claim that we have for every employee that's on the plan from the dollars that go above seventy five thousand. So the city's self-insured plan pays for every claim, medical as well as prescription drugs, from the first dollar to the seventy fifth thousand dollar. And then the reinsurer is responsible for everything above that. So one of the renewals today is from Tokyo Marine H C C. The other one is from U M R, United Healthcare. And U M R, United Healthcare, provides us with what they call the third party administrator. They process all of our claims. We use United Healthcare's discount at the doctors and the hospitals to get the reductions in premiums. So our group health insurance, we received it. It was reviewed by the chairman and Ms. Falk, and we answered the questions that were necessary about the plan. The increase for our group health insurance plan for the coming year, beginning July one, is nine percent. A nine percent increase in the premium, which roughly translates to thirty five thousand dollars a year. However, on January tenth of this year, we received a check from Tokyo Marine H C C in the amount of thirty six thousand dollars. So the rebate that we got from them will cover the increase in costs that we have going forward for the next twelve months. We also...
The thirty six thousand will cover, but it's still thirty five thousand.
The thirty five thousand that they asked for in their increase. And I think for us to understand our issues with group health insurance, we have to understand that the lowest amount of money we lay out is for reinsurance and for third party administration. That makes up less than fifteen percent of our cost. The majority of our cost is below the seventy five thousand. It's the claims from the first dollar all the way to the seventy fifth thousand dollar. That's where we have issues. And that's where we need some help. We haven't had any, this past year, any large payments. But as Councilman Bruceford pointed out in the meeting, we need to do something about wellness. And we need to explain to our employees the importance of being well, taking the necessary inoculations, and taking care of yourself. That is the way we can try to lower our costs, our health insurance costs. And that's our major expense in the whole program is our self-insured part. We received a rebate from Optum R X, who provides us with prescriptions. So far this year, for the first three months, we've received a hundred thousand in rebates, a hundred and four thousand from Optum R X. We also have been granted by U M R a five thousand dollar credit for us to assist us in establishing a wellness program. And they are willing to assist us and help us design something that would make sense for our employees and try to contain the cost. One would think that the majority of the costs that we have is medical claims, doctors, hospitals, chiropractors, everything but prescription drugs. But in fact, what's happening today is that our medical costs, everything but prescription drugs, is basically flat or decreasing. But our R X costs are going higher and higher, to the point in which last month, we spent more on prescription drugs than we did on every other medical expense that we had, the doctors, hospitals, and everything else. So even with these rebates we're getting, we still have a problem. We have people on our plan whose medication alone costs over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Almost two hundred thousand.
Almost two hundred thousand. That's one employee.
One employee.
One employee. And we have another person on the plan who's over a hundred thousand. I think it's a hundred and twenty, something thousand. So, and today, if you watch any television at all, thing that comes on TV every other besides the car insurer, the car people and the lawyers, it's the drug salesmen. And they're telling you that they got the brand new hottest, latest, whatever you need, and go see a doctor and go get this. And it, don't worry about the cost, because it will give you a coupon and it only costs you five bucks. So to take these very expensive drugs, costs less to the employee than our normal deductible at the pharmacy of twenty dollars. So we have issues and we're trying to figure out, and every time the industry tries to get a hold of the drug costs, the pharmaceutical industry figures out another way to get around it. So that's basically where we are. So in looking at things as a whole, wellness and doing something below the line of seventy five thousand, definitely something we have to address going forward. Our insurance cost is remaining flat over the next twelve months. And I think that's due to us not having any large claims. At any moment, someone could come down with a major claim. But at this point, and throughout this year, we have not had that. So after reviewing everything, I've concluded that my recommendation to you is that you approve the renewal for the reinsurance carrier and the third party administrator. And I'm looking forward to visiting with the mayor to go over the contract, which wanna proceed in that direction. I'm gonna move back.
I have, okay. You have a motion, you have a second? My motion and a second on the table. I have some questions, because unfortunately I couldn't be there Friday, and I did not have, I didn't look at this, but I did not have time to visit with the chairman or yourself over the weekends, because I already had plans. So my question is, I know that Tokyo Marine is our normal reinsurer. And if I look at the renewal over the current, and then I look at option two over the current, we're recommending a renewal, which comes at a cost of over, total liability cost to the city of over two hundred thousand dollars that potentially could be caught at over option two, if I'm understanding this correctly. Option two renewal, which would be no intermediary with U L L I C O Incorporated and Union Line Labor Life Insurance Company, actually came in almost in line with our current rates versus the renewal. So I know there's a reason for it. I wanna hear what the reason is.
If you turn the page and look at...
Yep, the extra laser, I see that.
And you look under I L I C O, you will see that they have added a third person to put a laser on, which means that additional responsibility. So they believe that we have someone in our group that is going to have at least two hundred thousand dollars with additional claims. So they have put a laser on that person.
And is that laser not figured into this potential aggregate cost?
It's our cost, it's not their cost. They're reducing, to compete with the current carrier, they reduced the cost but added the laser. We do not have that third laser with our current carrier. For that reason, and I asked for it to be checked into by U M R, and they suspect that that person is, has a serious medical condition and is going to be one of our large claims eventually.
So if that laser comes back at two hundred thousand dollars for the year, that option two would still put us the same price as renewal with Tokyo Marine, correct? If it's a two hundred thousand dollar difference, maximum liability?
But it's not so much the maximum liability, it's the actual cost of the policy. We rarely, we never hit the aggregate. We've never got to the three million or the two point nine million. So in all the years that I've been here, we never hit the maximum. So what you really wanna focus on is, what is the cost? Now, they have a rate increase of six point something percent as opposed to nine percent. That difference is a few thousand dollars. In my opinion, it's not worth a few thousand dollars in savings and to have a potential two hundred thousand dollar laser for that employee, which is why, in my mind, I don't believe that that's an appropriate thing for the city.
If we don't have the laser person, how does it affect the premiums?
Our current carrier did not put a laser on that person. Only one of the bidders put a two hundred thousand dollar laser. What did entice us to take the plan, they reduced our premium a few thousand dollars from thirty five thousand to maybe two hundred thousand.
Not near enough to cover.
But not nearly enough to cover the two hundred thousand. And when we looked into the medical history and who this person could be, either U M R is not paying close enough attention, or they're gonna write it out. And since we didn't have any large claims, they'll just take one of, they'll take the next large payment for the rate increase that they gave us. So the rate increase of the nine percent really can be washed with or made pretty much flat by using the rebate. And we're also entitled to a rebate for the current year, which ends on June thirtieth. So we should be getting an additional thirty, forty thousand dollars during the year, which would make the whole process much less costly than it currently is projected to be.
You make insurance so complicated.
Oh, yeah.
It's kinda hard to... I have just one more thing to ask. I get Optimum R X cards in the mail all the time. But when I go to the pharmacy to fill my medicine, they don't take them.
Why would they not take them?
You know what I mean. But anyway, it's been going on for years. We don't take that, we, you know. Now, it's not a major, it's not C V S or Walgreens. It's a local.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What the local pharmacies have, and they, you know, to compete against the gorilla, if you're a single practitioner and you have your little store pharmacy, to compete against Walgreens and C V S is really tough. And although C V S and Walgreens can take a hit on some high-priced medicines, the local pharmacies guys can't. And so what they're telling you is, would you please go to C V S and Walmart to fill your prescription? Because if I fill it here, I'm gonna end up losing money. Well, I've been told that once. But it's true, yeah, it is true. And it's just a way of life. But we wanna make sure you can fill it now. There's ways if we wanted to put the squeeze on our local pharmacies. If Optimum R X found out that that pharmacy was doing that and not accepting your card, there would be repercussions to that pharmacy. And I don't wanna see that happen.
Well, then, then I'm not good on this either, man.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, item number two, discussion impossible action pertaining to the one-year employment anniversary increase of fifteen percent for the police department officers. Chief, my party, you have the floor.
Yes. Can you give the new police officer salary that we started at forty thousand in January of twenty twenty three? The next raise would come as senior patrolman, which the city attorney advised me that it is still first class. Police officer first class in the law that they did before forty years ago. I'm encouraging the city council to pass this salary, this raise increase. It's more or less an incentive to police officers here. Because when they get to senior patrolman or patrolman first class, they're not gonna be moving up to sergeant very fast, because when you guys get to sergeant lieutenant, they don't tend to leave very often. I have three guys this month that will make their first year. We've been here two years with this administration. I'm finally getting three guys to be here a year this month. I wanna keep them here, and I wanna recommend that we pay our increase, that when we hire them, we call them fifty percent increase. And it's in line, and I think we have it in the budget. I think this was, as I said, we are about thirteen percent below budget right now.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Bart, I'm gonna ask you, can you please advise us? We are a civil service operation. And can you advise this council or city?
So right now, the civil service line employment with the police department just provides for three positions. Officer, lieutenant, and sergeant. Whereas the state statute provides for four. So the mayor and I have met on this and discussed it. And when I told her, I would recommend this. We gotta clean that up with civil services. We gotta go to civil service and have them pass a reservation, adding a line item to the ranks. Classified position. That would be administered the same way, where to move up in rank, they'd have to comply with whatever requirements civil service requires for any required rank that you're moving up to. What he's here asking y'all to do is something that has been the policy of the police department for quite some time, it's my understanding. And there's no civil service rule or state statute that mandates that y'all do this. We had previously put the department on notice that we would stay any and all raises until such time as the litigation was resolved and we review the policies between the city hall and the police department as well as civil service. I recommended to the mayor yesterday that, you know, I would probably recommend to the council to approve these people that were hired prior to this stay basically was put in place. I mean, they were told this when they were hired. I'm assuming they expected, it's been the normal practice of the police department, to give this fifteen percent. But going forward, I just think it's something that the council needs to address and determine on its own versus an automatic policy that maybe the department says. Because at the time when the policy was created, I mean, these people were making eighteen, nineteen, twenty thousand dollars a year, where they've gotten significant raises, so...
Significant raises, and it seemed that they didn't appreciate that.
So, so again, if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. But, you know, it's totally up to the council if they wanna grant this particular increase. There's no law mandating it.
We're only talking about the reason.
Those agree right now, due to their fifteen percent increase.
So they were hired as patrol officers. And the practice has been, they get promoted on one year.
One year of qualifying for police officer and having their, being post-certified from this guy.
The problem is, they skip the step of going to civil service and actually creating the certified position. So although it's been a practice, it was never a position that was approved by civil service and classified and parameter set. For instance, the fire department has a fireman. And when you wanna become a firefighter first class, you have to wait eighteen months and take a test. And if you pass the test, it gives a five percent increase, right? When we pulled the book to see what the qualifications were for S B O, the position doesn't even exist. So that's a problem, right? So that needs to be rectified, and it needs to go to civil service so that we can have a classified position with whatever the parameters are. And there needs to be a test like there is in every other civil service promotion, is my understanding of it. Of course, that needs to be probably looked at with the state.
I think it was approved with the city council back then, because they went to the state and had a law written on it. So the city council would have fought this. I don't think it would have flue. But it's something the city council probably approved back forty years ago.
Yeah.
A lot has changed in forty years. So Bart and I, after looking at everything, although I think these officers were promised it, and I don't believe in taking back something that was promised. But I think going forward, we should, that position needs to be created with parameters in which it gets promoted. And it should not be an automatic promotion. It should be based on testing and all the qualifications that every other civil service, indivisible, and fire police and stuff is too. And while we can't give automatic raises for certain people, it needs to be something the same thing that everybody else, all of our other departments all, that's my thought and opinion on it. But you guys make the decision, you guys...
Well, that will be my motion, that Bart raised. This is a fair council, this is a fair mayor. And the people that were already promised this will get that. And Bart, if you could organize with the mayor to go to the civil service board to fix this, it could help those after that.
From what I understand, Bart explained to me, this to clean up the paperwork. Yeah, just to clean up the literature.
So you're making a motion to approve this? Can I make a substitute motion to table this until all this is cleaned up? And when we get everything cleaned up, then we're going and take care of it? Would you suggest that or...?
I mean, you can. I think what we're saying is, or what I'm saying is, I've advised the mayor that it's probably the right thing to do to honor these three gentlemen that he's asking for tonight. So getting it cleaned up before doing that, I don't think really makes a difference. We're gonna get it cleaned up anyway. But in the future, there's already basically a statement issued to the department saying, look, don't promise, don't put this in your policy, don't promise people this raise, because it may not, it may not happen for those hired after...
I think it's February one, I'm sorry to find it.
February of this year. So anybody that was, I can't see my position changing. It's up to the council and the mayor. But anybody hired prior to that date, you know, I would think you would approve, just like you've approved everybody prior. You follow me?
Yeah, I follow you.
Yeah. The idea is to clean up, to have civil services reflect the four rankings, which also are reflected in the state statute. But once that's done, that has nothing to do with this fifteen percent raise. Once we do that, it'll have some requirement to maybe move up a test like the mayor's saying. However, what they get when they do it and how much, again, is what needs to be addressed at some point by the council. Taking into consideration the significant raises they've received over the last couple of years.
Yeah, so the three officers would be entitled to that.
Fifteen percent.
Yeah, well, I would draw my motion to table it.
Okay. So I have a motion and a...
One second.
Your second and three minute motion, okay. Mayor, I have just one question for the chief. The three officers that we're discussing, when will, when will they have the opportunity to move by?
They move up to this rank when we give them that pay.
And who, when we give them that pay? And that's your decision only?
No, this is, right now, is because they have the experience, they have the post certification, they qualify. That's because that's all the qualification was, staying here one year and being post-certified.
Never, never something I can... There was no requirement ever, like, you know, this is the problem, right? Okay. Any other questions? Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Number three, discussion impossible action pertaining to rental agreement at the pavilion number one at Como Park. Well, A A Como. Chris, well, council, I don't think we really need action. I just want to update y'all. Chris and I have been going back and forth about an issue. Sorry, I have that in my mind. Chris and I have been going back and forth with an issue about people calling at the last minute, wanting water turned on at the pavilion. At A A Como, water floods and otherwise. Last week, he had three different people that wanted it. So he brought to me this form that he would like to utilize. I happened to be at a mitsus mayor's conference last week and discussed this with the other mayors. And so we implemented this this weekend, just wanna make y'all aware of it. It is an agreement for the pavilion. When someone wants to have a party, it's not just for somebody to go use a pavilion, right? If you wanna have your party there, we need a person who's in charge of the party. We're requiring a seventy five dollar deposit, cash only. We hold that money, we don't do anything with it until the party's over with. And if you leave it cleaned up and everything's in place, then we give you back fifty of that, and we give twenty five just for cleanup. Inspection is required. Chris or some, or you appoint you will inspect it, make sure that everything's in good condition. And at the conclusion of the event, remove your personal items, decorations. Make sure the garbage is in the trash cans, that they're full. You know, don't leave them overflowing. And with that, they will make sure the bathrooms are open. Chris or one of his assignees will make sure the bathrooms are open. And if they want water turned on, they'll make sure that they got Larry and then go and make sure the water's turned on for them. So Chris, I'm gonna let you go up the floor to say how it went this weekend.
So this weekend, we had two on Saturday, everything went beautiful. Well, Sunday, the phone starts ringing at about ten thirty in the morning. Somebody wants the pavilion. Well, you have no paperwork, you have no deposit, you have nobody on, you have no record of anything anywhere. You know, so we get fifty phone calls. But that's the reason why we wanna put this in place. Okay, so Sunday, they didn't have anything. They packed their water slide up and it went somewhere else. So what happens in this agreement is, everybody knows ahead of time what's going on, because we're civil service. We don't work on the weekends unless it's required to work on the weekends. So I have to pay somebody overtime to do this, to open the bathrooms. You get a water hose for your water slide, because most people that have parties want a water slide. And we have electricity on site. So all this stuff is provided. So all this stuff is provided for you. All we ask is that you pick up your trash and put it in the garbage, because too many times we've had parties there where there's crawfish heads all over the ground, crab feelings all over the ground, trash all over the place, bathrooms have feces on the walls. So this just makes people accountable for what they're using, we want them to use it, we encourage them to use it, it's just a responsible way of somebody being in charge. Now, if some other party gets there, you can't turn them away, because this is not a rental of a pavilion, this isn't an agreement that I'm gonna provide your water hose for your water slide, I'm gonna open the bathrooms for you, I'm gonna provide toilet paper, I'm gonna provide trash bags, I'm gonna provide electricity for you. So it's a public park, we tell them you can't turn anybody away, most of them say they welcome the other people if they get there, and I tell them, if there becomes a conflict, they have to call the police. I am not the police, I don't carry a gun or a badge, you call the police and you let the police handle it. And what they do with it is on them, it's not on Parks and Recreation, you know? So this weekend, it went well, except for Sunday, didn't here anymore. I mean, but it, but it is what it is.
Well, I spoke with the mayor of Baldwin and he said, you know, he said, um, catch me bring out, but he said, you know, we rented a park for, for them, it was an Easter egg hunt, right? Two hundred dollars to rent the park and no refund of the money, but he pays an employee to sit there to make sure that the new pavilion they built doesn't get messed up and they make sure it's cleaned up and they spray, you know, make sure the mosquitoes are sprayed for, because there's all this other stuff you do whenever you have a party coming in. And he said, you know, we lose money on that, but it's just to make sure that the stuff we build gets taken care of and that, you know, everybody's held accountable. And so I think seventy-five dollars with a fifty dollar refund is quite reasonable for everything they get. It's more than anything to stop the people calling at the last minute and wanting water turned on. It's not fair to our employees who have the weekend off to send one out to go turn on water because there was no plan in order, right? So, I mean, I think that this is well fair and it needs to happen, so that's.
Can you, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Can we get targeted at something else besides a rental agreement? Because, I mean, you're gonna start.
I don't, I don't think it says rental agreement on it.
Well, that's what.
It's a park pavilion agreement, use of water and restroom.
Attending to the rental agreement.
Well, I think. But the agreement doesn't say that on it.
It says, City of Abigael AA Como Park Pavilion Agreement, Use of Water and Restroom.
Yeah, well, so you're not, you're not renting, you're not renting anything?
Right.
You're not renting anything?
Well, I'm aware of, you know, I, I, I think it's a good idea, but I just think that we should not call it a rental agreement because you're gonna have a complaint and say, well, we pay taxes, why, to build that, why do we have to pay rent? But I understand that if you gotta call somebody out, the seventy-five dollars overtime to pay the employees.
I guess it's been a hundred and fifty at this point, yeah.
And listen, we had a party on Saturday, her water slide got there late, her time stopped at six o'clock, Paul got there, they, they were still having the party, they complained that their water slide got there late, he called me, what you want to do, Chris? I said, what time does your other party end? He said seven. I said, well, tell them they can stay till seven, but when you come back at seven, it's over with, you know? So he went out, time, he shouldn't have had to go out, it should have been over, but we're not unreasonable, we want the kids to have fun, you know? But we have to set, we have to set a limit when you want, when you want our water special, our water hose that we don't leave, it's behind a fence, so.
Well, that's not my thing about the kids having fun, I was just thinking about the citizens, because I've gotten calls, and I'm sure the mayor knows about it, why is the water home and why do we have to do this and do that and use the pavilion? But, uh.
Because all the taxes we pay don't even touch the cost to have, to have even one park open, right? It's not, we all pay taxes, but you can't continue to improve things on what we're collecting taxes, right?
Yeah, and just one more question, then I'm gonna shut up. Who's gonna keep up with who called first?
That's, that's our first and rec.
We tell them, we tell them when they call, and then when I get two or three that want the same date, I call them all and say, okay, we got three people, y'all can all have it, do y'all all want to be together? And then slowly, slowly they say, well, no, we're gonna go somewhere else, and then one will say, well, we, we still want it, and another one might say, we still want it. I can't, I can't say, unless this council tells me that it's a rental agreement, that we're gonna rent the pavilion.
Which, that's what Baldwin does, they rent the whole park.
Then nobody else, then nobody else could come.
But of course, that's Baldwin, that's not Apple Hill.
Well, I mean, it's whatever.
Baldwin is.
And right now, we're just talking about Como Park, right?
Pavilion one, and we had one in Pavilion two, so they had two people, and this is how we, we settled it. The other girl said she had a portallet, so she, she got a portallet, she had took Pavilion two, she could be by herself, we put them in the grass, there's not much grass left on the parking at Pavilion two, we put them in the grass with a water hose, electricity, they had a blast.
Yeah, well, that's a great idea, but.
I think, I mean, quite honestly, I think it should be, especially for a water slide at any park, that should be a thing, because they unhook that, they leave the water running, every person in Abigael's paying that deal while that water's running, right? I mean.
Yeah, so that's why.
We have fifty-something percent water loss at our water plant right now.
And we fixing to start the splash pad.
It's to make sure that everything's shut off and everything's, you know, in good order when they leave and not causing us more.
I agree, it should be.
Are we starting at AA Como Park because that's the most demand right now, right?
Because we're not, well, I won't get into mechanical, we had our first Easter egg hunt in a long time and I want people and the kids to be out there to enjoy themselves because we want the kids, I want them in my district to utilize the parks. And the Easter egg hunt went off, I was out there, it was nice, everybody enjoyed themselves and when it was all over with, that family picked up and I helped them too, but they, they were out there picking up and cleaning up and I texted her and said, everything is cleaned, just garbage hands.
That young lady did it right, though, she came get her special, special event permit. She, she did everything right, you know? The ones that do everything right, usually clean up behind themselves, there's the ones that don't do it right that we have the mess with, and it's not fair to Paul, Oris, or Josh, or whoever's at the park, that they have to clean up the mess that they leave, and it's terrible sometimes.
Yeah, no, they, they pay that seventy-five dollars.
Oh, no, I, I won't be, right now, I'm not in favor.
She, she got a special permit, I'm not sure.
She got a, she got a permit, wasn't she non-qualified?
Yeah, yeah, so you're definitely.
It's a non-qualified for the special event, but I think it's thirty dollars, but we don't even, but these are much, we haven't charged.
Sure, no, yeah, she, no.
Yeah, I, we just want to create another bureaucracy, who did they pay the seventy-five dollars to when they?
Oh, no, they come in, they fill out the form, the seventy-five dollars cash goes in an envelope, what did you wanna say?
I, I, I take the cash and I give them back their money, we deposit the twenty-five dollars with Ms. Kathy, she's gonna see the twenty-five dollars that we keep, she's gonna deposit, we have receipts of all of that.
And the twenty-five is basically for, to clean, who you have to pay to clean up the restroom.
To, uh, right, they pick up their trash in the restrooms and then we have to clean and we provide the toilet paper and, you know, pay the overtime.
It probably cost us a hundred dollars in time when you look at all that, but we don't charge another cost, we just need somebody to be accountable and call somebody if something's broken out.
The weird thing, they haven't even called for their money back yet.
Yeah, well.
So we're gonna call them tomorrow and say, hey, when you want to come get your money, they haven't even called to get their money back, you know?
Chris, thank you, I think this is moving in a good direction. City, we have already surveyed Crowley, Lafayette, New Iberia, all the neighboring communities, and the only way you can keep these premium recreation, let's just say, call the splash pad, recreation, it takes maintenance, it takes cleanup, it takes someone to come from off to on the clock, and thank you for thinking of that, and I hope it works for a wonderful summer for all the kids.
So let's get the splash pad, Memorial Day is the.
Why don't you cover that when you get to your final report?
Okay, alright, okay.
Right, anything else right now under that? Yes, go ahead.
My name is Linda Copley. This department kept saying rental, so instead of rental, why not a damage?
It's just a pavilion agreement, I mean.
No, what I'm saying is, since rentals sound not too good, but.
It's not a rental, it was just put on the agenda wrong, they're, they're working on the agenda was wrong, it's not a rental agreement, it's just a pavilion agreement, you like a use agreement.
Right, you know, and, and I think people understand damage, because if we rent something else for a wedding or whatever, a building or whatever, you know, it called damage or whatever, so.
A damaged apartment, yeah.
You know, and also, can they call you instantly, or I think a time, a time should be put.
We set a Wednesday, we set Wednesday as much.
Wednesday is the deadline, if you book two months in advance, you should call the Wednesday before your event and reconfirm, naturally your money's already paid, so, and confirm that.
We did set a cutoff, because that was the problem, people showing up that day and wanting us to send people out, and we're like, there's nobody work, you know, like if there's nobody at the park, any organized port, there's nobody there, it's to call somebody out, it's not fair if they don't eat, right? So we did put a Wednesday, if you wanted for the weekend, a minimum, close of business on Wednesday.
And they can occupy the pavilion from eight in the morning to.
Chris, how did you?
They give you their times, I don't, I don't set a limit on their time.
Just to know it's on.
Beginning time, Paul, Paul meet you, or Josh or Oris will meet you for your beginning time and give you your, your water and open your bathrooms for you, you're responsible for those bathrooms from that time that we open, and then your close time, at close when Paul goes inspect, you have to have all your trash picked up, so you, you give me your times and we work around your time.
And listen, this is living, this is a new and living thing that might have to be adjusted, but it was just something to try to get us in a better position than what has been happening last, at the end of last summer and, and this spring with people just showing up and then being mad because we wouldn't send someone out to open things, but, and we'd always tell them, and I think we have signage out there that says, you know, you need to call for, for these things, but, anyway, I think it's the right move and it went off well when we had three people requesting it, Chris kind of puts a pressure on me, I wasn't even ready, I hadn't had time to review it, he goes, I need to, I said, go ahead and do it and we'll just, we'll just figure it out if it doesn't work, so.
Chris, why I asked the question, because that was an incident, they wanted to have a trick boil and it sold tickets and, and the water wasn't on, the restroom wasn't open and I got, I got attacked all, all day, you know? I'm not, I don't.
And that would have required especially the permit and they never came here for especially the permit.
Yeah, well, that's good, good, that won't happen.
Two years in a row.
Two years in a row, yeah.
Are you gonna put, we gonna put signage out there that says reserved by Wednesday of the.
Yeah, we'll have it all signed.
And is that just gonna apply, we're gonna go to the feet park or whatever?
I think for right, I think for right now, it only, it only applies to pavilions at AA Como, until such sign as another problem arises at another park that we need to put a policy like this in place, then we do that, right?
No one calls for any other place but those, those that pavilions, that's all the calls we get, you know?
Me too, that's all the calls I get.
I mean, I've had calls for special events at Parker Ave, but that's a special event permit, right? It's a little, a little different, that's supposed to have been kind of taking up the whole park, it's supposed to have a maybe. Okay, any other questions, comments? Nope, moving on, I have no board to ratify payment for a transformer purchase from LUS in the amount of eight thousand five 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 ninety-six, second. Motion in a second, any questions or comments? This was the transformer for Stone Bridge, it went out.
We have some on order, but unfortunately, all of them came in yet, so we needed one quick.
Thank you.
Ours are in the process of coming in, it just takes a while to get them.
No questions or comments?
Maybe they can put some streetlights now.
Did they still not put that?
Still haven't put any streetlights.
Did you report that to the board?
I told it to the management.
Streetlight inside?
Inside.
Lighting inside is.
Lighting inside, around driveways, at Stone Bridge, it's still.
Chief, can you bring me all of your recommendations that you discussed with the property that you're in writing, so Bart and I can follow up?
I think I gave one to Bart.
I don't know.
I'll bring it, I'll bring you another.
Okay, all right, motion in a second to ratify, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Item number five, to adopt a resolution granting authority to the mayor to sign and submit necessary documents along with adopting certain policies, plan the procedures in connection with fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, community development block grant program.
I move.
Okay, motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Item number six, to approve payment of estimate for partial payment number two in the amount of two thousand eight eighty-eight ninety-five payable to Mesotech International Incorporated relative to the automated weather observ, observing system, A W A S, thirty P T replacement project.
I move.
Motion in a second, this is at the airport, it's nearly complete, the project, they just need to paint the tilt tower and if you punch those items, I think mid-June they should close out the grant. Y'all have any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Item number seven, to approve payment of estimate for partial payment number one in the amount of forty-four thousand seven twenty-seven forty-three payable to Glen H A Construction Incorporated relative to the Abigael World Transfer Program downtown of the streets improvement project. Motion in a second on the table, any questions or comments? I'll give a, an update on the project at the end.
Sure, it's nice in front of the troops, I'll tell you that.
Thank you. No more questions or comments, yes, Mrs. Jean?
I'm not just commenting, I just look like a small payment for all the workers that come, but this is for April.
Ten times that work.
This is only for the month of April, and we're gonna only pay by the month. So in May, you're gonna be paying mid-June probably for May, because there's seventy different pay items that's gotta be adjusted by the end of the month's annual meeting, so that's how that's gonna work, so the next month, it's gonna be much longer.
It'll be a big bill.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, to accept the recommendation of Abigael Planning Commission to reapportion the property lines of the property belonging to El Ridgertown Properties LLC and Howe Properties LLC located at three oh nine Veterans Memorial, that's your problem, that's your district. This is the O'Swagman property, as you kiss, I don't know if you remember, but if you, if you do remember, probably about a year ago, they came to us and it was one large lot and they had subdivided into four lots, I believe. Now they're taking the largest lot that was left and subdividing it into additional parcels, and I think the reason for that is that it's easier to market in smaller parcels than it is those one large ones. I had a call, it's the, not the Howe Properties, but the other company is out in New York, they have looked at some potential tenants, potential tenants for the Lord Building, our, our tax structure is actually scaring them away, and so that's something I'll kind of ask some more questions to probe, because it's not the first time I've heard that, so that maybe we can come up with a solution, but they are looking for potential tenants on those properties and they don't have the tenant signs yet, but they think by dividing these parcels this way that it will, it will help them market it better. I do know that one is maybe a plasma center that they've been talking about for over a year, they had talked about medical supply company on the latest call, they did not say that, and, and the rest I'm not gonna disclose, because it's sounding confidential to you, but hopefully, hopefully they can make some progress on marketing that property and get some, some tenants on, on it soon. And so it did come before the zoning and planning, Chris and then looked at the utilities, we told them what they would have to do to get to utilities for different lots, and it's our recommendation to approve it as they submitted the subdivision.
I move, sorry.
All right, I have a motion in a second, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. That is all for items of new business, and the items of old business, we have none, so we'll move on to the board manual reports and updates, engineers, Mr. Jean.
Yes, I do, it's been a long time, but I made a call and told Shaw Group that we had a meeting tonight, and I'm sure the council wanted to update on where you stand.
This is our sewer project, for anybody that doesn't know.
So we scheduled a meeting with them at two o'clock this afternoon, Chris and I and I inspected, and asked them, what's the status of that project, and we met with two of the managers today, and committed that by, they only have one bore left to do across the railroad track and the gas line, that's been standing still for at least a month, and they committed to have it done by Saturday. From that, that would allow us to test the line from the river to the sewer plant, and we'll be able to put that line in service. Other components needs to be done, the dress up of all the line from the pump station to the plant, and we want that as a priority, because we got streets that needs to be repaired, we got some. And we want that as a priority because we got streets that needs to be repaired, we got some other work that needs to be done, easements that hasn't been done. So, we're gonna clean up the project from that. We have two air relief valves that's gotta be installed. And from that, they will pressure the test line from the beginning to the end. And that will be an acceptable project once it passes the test. And then the control wire that follows the line, that has to be tested from one end to the other. I think half of it's done, but the other half has not yet been done. So, we clear up the force main and then go work on these two pump stations that left to be done to be able to use the line.
And have the repairs from the smoke testing been done already? The repairs from the smoke testing that was done?
They only have one left to do.
Okay.
Only one left to do.
Mr. Jean, you comment on that?
We're working, but yeah.
They don't, so I'm gonna try to take Willie with me over there and see if they'll answer the door. Or Alex, maybe they don't know them, I'm just a strange face, you know.
Maybe have City Hall call.
What's that?
Maybe have City Hall call.
Uh, maybe. But we're gonna try to make contact with them to get that one last repair.
Of course, Chris had some comments as well because he worked with them on storing their equipment, on doing various things on the project. And so, I asked him to meet with us this afternoon.
They didn't want me in there.
So, after Mr. Jean gave us the man, I made mine and it was about two things, cleaning up that lot that I let them use on South Louisiana, I think it is. They need to cut the grass, need to clean it up. And all the barricades that are, that are down along the route, Mr. Terry called me about one of them. I did tell them they needed to pick that up or straighten it up or whatever they had to do. That was unacceptable to leave that in the street like that, you know. It's not my property to go pick up, it's their property, it's their responsibility. So, we let them know all of that and they.
So, when you, when you, you know, I'm so used to hearing people, I shouldn't say it like that. I'm so used to seeing people complain online about the conditions of the streets. And it hadn't occurred to me until about a month ago and I called Mr. Jean and Chris and I said, I want you to find out when that sewer contract is done because all of those, the torn up, mowed street and all of that is not us neglecting it, it's a sewer contractor that's taken two years to complete a project and when they finish, they have to go fix that road. So, I want the people to know, it's not the city of Abigail neglecting the street, it's a project underway and the contractor will be repairing the road, it's just taking them way too long to do the project.
And of course, they gotta get back in that hole to test it, so that's why it's not fully done. So, we had to have the testing done before the cleanup. But now, after the testing and that passed, then the cleanup is the next priority for the city. I remember you said that last time. Also, you asked at the last meeting, how many days in arrears are they on the project? It's a hundred and sixty-six days. As of today.
Is anyone who can rip off payments until they speed up the project?
We can do that, but we have to do that at the end of that process. And we'll explain that as we go further along.
There's some liquidated damages and such that you go after for that part in arrears.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jean.
All right.
I've been waiting for that update. Okay, and I'll see Kim, must have missed it.
Yeah, Kim's not over here.
Okay. Attorney, or?
Nothing.
Nothing? Call the court started to Chris.
Well, we got a lot going on. Downtown project, thank God we got this contractor, they taking care of all the issues we have underneath the streets. The South State Street, Badwater, you can see the guys might still be working there now. We fixed it yesterday, we went to repair the hole today because of some sinkage that we had. We get over there, we start digging it, there is some more water. So, now, it went all the way underneath the street, but we were able to fix it without breaking the rest of the street. We had to break on the side of the street, on South Side, Toad's Side. So, that's a big major repair. So, that's going on right now. We're gonna open the splash pad either Wednesday or Thursday of this week, just test run it for the weekend, it'll be open for Memorial Day weekend. Kids will be out of school or are out of school now. So, we'll have that, I think it's in good working order, we kind of ran it about two months ago to make sure everything was functioning like it's supposed to be. But, the kids will, the kids will break it in and let us know if it's working or not.
It's a good thing the temperature should be in the nineties.
Sure, yeah.
Oh, my God.
We'll have that opening ready. Lafitte Park, the grass is growing, where we put that mat down at, a straw mat, the grass is growing. Just not quite, just not quite ready yet. I might check it again in two or three more days from now and see if maybe some more grew. Bad part about the straw mat is that it's gonna be hard to mow it because it's monofilament and it has to disintegrate on its own before you can put a lawnmower on it. That may, that may take quite some time to do it. I think if the grass is good enough, we could probably start fishing it, you know.
I'm not sure when.
Uh, we need to check it again to see. Yeah. Right, because I know people wanna, wanna, wanna walk too, you know, not just fish, they really wanna walk.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we can't disopen it, but people don't want to be silenced, you know.
But we've been, we've been keeping it up though, we've been mowing the grass and keeping it up so that when we open, we're ready to go. Any questions?
Speaking of John Harder Park, Chief, do you know about the incident last night, yesterday, when a young boy crossed over the fence and, oh no, that's okay, that's Reggie, that's Reggie. I need to talk to Reggie. But a young guy crossed over the fence and Reggie was passing by and so the individual that sent me the picture said, that's okay, I don't need to call the police, Reggie is here, but it was a danger for him to have crossed that fence and was on that property by himself.
At which point?
At John Harder Park, at the fishing hole.
So, he should have been arrested. He should have been arrested if he crossed the fence.
Well, that's what I was getting ready to ask the chief, but it's Reggie that I need to talk to.
I didn't get a call about it, I mean, when he jumped the splash pad fence, I had him arrested, I mean, you jump the fence, you.
Scare him.
Yeah. Do what you gotta do, I mean, hey, there's a fence there with a gate for a reason, it's not for you to jump it. So, anyway, I didn't, I didn't know about that. It's, it's really tough to keep people out these days, but you know, we try the best we can.
We don't wanna keep them out anyhow when they have to.
Right, right.
Make sure that.
Well, and that's what I said, I said, you know, I told the young lady last night, I really be glad when we can open it because although there is a minor, maybe there is a young man that will go out there with him to fish since that seems to be his entrance. And he had his fishing hole, he wasn't out there to cause trouble.
Right, yeah.
He had his fishing hole, you know.
Unfortunately, it was locked when he tried to go, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Locked in there, nobody knows.
Yeah, right, correct.
That's the back of life, that's the danger, yeah.
We have a lot of other stuff going on. The storms kind of knocked us back a little bit with the trees, we're trying to get to picking up all the trees. Y'all are kind enough to get me a new dump truck, unfortunately, it's still not in. My old dump truck's been at the shop for three months, going with second fuel injection pump.
I talk about that almost every day.
It's, it's tough. We can't do things as quick as we used to because as some of y'all know, we still have Go-Mo, but it's not in all the city anymore. Unfortunately, some of the guys didn't work out. So, Willie's crew has taken that back over and Willie assured me that he's gonna get it back to like it used to be, which I'm accustomed to. He has five or six new men, that takes a little while to train them on where they need to cut. The seasoned man has resigned as of this, of this morning. So, now we got new men, so Willie has to spend more time with them, which stops me from doing the extras that we were, we were doing at a quick pace. So, just be patient with us, it's not that we forget about you, it's just that some things take a little bit more importance than, than some of the other things, you know.
And I wanna meet with you one day, not this week, but next week, so that we can go and figure how we're going to do the handicap around that.
Uh, we also had a tree down in Avea Park, we have since removed the queens and the electrical department may have started cutting that tree up to date. So, we have that park closed because the trees are a hazard for people to be in there. And it was a big tree.
And a lot of bees.
A lot of bees, a lot of queens. The beekeeper from Gato actually came and got them.
Oh.
I think he did that sometime on Saturday morning. So, we're in the process of cutting that tree up, but it takes a while to haul all that off, I mean, the stump is, is very, very large.
And tell them about the, I'm sorry.
Marigold, Marigold round, yeah, the Marigold round, we called me one day, it was broken, so we took it apart, you know, it needed two bearing. And, you know, that Marigold round's probably fifty, sixty years old, but you can't buy them like that no more. So, the mayor had a contact that was gracious enough to sandblasted and painted for us. So, it's now painted blue with yellow arms. We picked it up today, they leveled the surface and we're gonna go in and, we gotta do some work to the shaft, we gotta sand the shaft, put a little grease on it and put the Marigold round back in place so the kids have a brand new Marigold round. Brand new second hand, but you don't think you're gonna be able to tell it.
You can't buy that, you can't buy that.
No, you can't buy those anymore.
It looks like it's brand new, I was so happy to reset it.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, man. And then the swing, the swing, a couple of swings need to be repaired.
Yeah, we need to paint the posts and, you know.
It's hard to paint those posts because of the type of pipe it is, the paint don't stick till it's, the paint sometime just starts peeling and it looks even uglier. We had repair all those chains and belts in there. In that park, the mayor had paid for that before she became mayor, that was one of her projects, so a lot of that stuff is new, we need to just go look and see, maybe something got damaged or sometime the S hooks, they'll stretch apart, so we're just gonna put some new Ss.
And we had bought a bunch of swing seats.
Yeah, yeah, we still have some extras, whatever we need. The tree did land on the backside of that pavilion. I don't think it punctured the roof, can't really tell right now, so I, I think we can save it, so.
Messed up the fence of the fence though.
Messed up the fence, so I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to probably put the fence back up. I know we all wanna do some work to that fence, but I still need to be able to secure the park, so I'll get the fence straightened back up, so. Any other questions? No, that's it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chris, thank you for that. Socks and red, Byron is not here.
It's got a league tournament starting tonight.
League tournament, but recreational play, right?
Yes, reg, reg ball, now end of the year, league tournament.
Okay, and he may have sent a, he may have sent a report, but Rainey was out today, so I didn't, I didn't get it if he did, so I'll email it to y'all if he has one in my inbox. Mayor, I have a couple things. Lafitte Park also council, I don't know, those of you who sat on the council, when I was a councilwoman, when we accepted the property on Lafitte Park, we promised to put a fence up, there was a portion of the property that was donated by the DeBrol family. And as part of the donation, we agreed to put a fence up along the outside perimeter. So, Chris and I met with, with, gosh, help me, Miss Peggy. And got the official lines of the donation property and Chris has called out for a quote so that we'll know what it costs to fence that in. Because we have the guys kind of clearing out some of those trees to where we can make a walking path and maybe move the dog park where there's some shade so people there, you know, can, can walk in the shade and not just out in the sun. And so, we're gonna put the fencing up as soon as Chris gets the quote, we'll bring the number back to you guys, that's something we promised, this was how it done two years ago and it never happened. And then, we will bring some other thoughts and plans for that park as we, as we work through that.
So, Primo and Tuchet went out to stake the line for us.
Okay.
And they were able to find the corners, but they were supposed to put extra stakes, but they can't because it's so thick in there.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have, we're gonna have some issues, may have to rent some equipment, heavier equipment than what I have to clean out the fence line so that we can put a, put a fence up. We're working on it, it's just gonna take us a little while to get to it.
Yeah, I know, so, but, well, if that's a dog park, then that need to be put somewhere else. Yeah, I have an idea for that, we're gonna have a little meeting out there and visit with the community.
But this fence line is, is property mine that was a must in the donation.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that. But all the fence line that was there for the dog park fencing has been removed with exception of a small section of it because the idea is to move it all the way where it doesn't connect to the pond at all, so people can fish around the pond and the dog park will be completely separate from the pond. And we even talked about trying to put the entrance to the dog park towards the front of the pond, towards the front of the property so that if the pond has to be closed for some reason, people with dogs could still bring their dogs in and, you know, you could lock off portions if you had to as opposed to closing the whole park. So, it's just taking some time with everything else we are going on, but it is coming. Also, Grayson Avenue, which is the six foot sidewalks along Grayson and Overly in the street, is currently being bid out. I think we open those bids December, uh, May thirtieth, maybe, end of the, end of the month. And so, June agenda, we should have those numbers to bring to y'all for a recommendation on approving those bids. And that's to do the improvements along Grayson. That was, that was state money that was appropriated, I think, two years ago, but it took us this long to get it engineered and designed and approved. So, that's happening and I did go to the Capitol a few times in the last month and a half and I know our legislators are working hard, I don't hope they'll be successful in getting us money, but they know what the priorities are and they are working on it. So, let's hope that they can bring one to win on that. Also, roads, I wanna say that we did on the last meeting, I'll let you guys know that we hired a camera crew to run all the sewer and storm water drains and what we have found is that there were tons of pipes crushed, not tons, I shouldn't say that, lots of problems with water and sewer, I don't even know the full report yet, but as we go through the route, as they're, they're cutting out the parts where we found that pipes are completely crushed or are gonna create foundation issues and we're repairing those. So, that's gonna slow the process, process down a little bit on the project, but it needed to be done. We found a fifteen inch storm water drain across Concord that was crushed, replaced it with two twelve inch pipes and eighteen inch drain right here in front of Tito's that went out to the square, that one was crushed, replaced the portion that needed to be, maybe worked on up something over by Piazza's today. We found a sewer line that went, I'm gonna let you, we found a sewer line that went through a storm water drain by my house where they had a cavity in the jazz line through a sewer line, that the road would have eventually caved in, so we fixing that. So, they're working through that, what the cameras showed, but, you know, you don't put in, you don't put a new road on old bones, so that's what we're doing. I will let Chris very, very short though, talk about the pipe, our little surprise we found.
While they were digging boxes, for the electrical boxes, they were breaking concrete. The guys came across a wooden pipe in the ground, they thought it was actually a beam and so, when they pulled it up, they realized it was a wooden pipe. So, you can still see it in the ground, there's pictures. I went down a rabbit hole to see if I could find documentation of maybe what exactly it was and I actually found it in city council meetings from eighteen sixty-seven. It is a drain line, a wooden drain line and originally, it'll cut across towards the square and it drains into the river. It's still there, you can see it, we kept the, the piece of wood that came out.
I would really like to put a big piece of plexiglass on top of it in just that one spot so people can see it in the ground and put the story about that she found where they talked about how the roads were muddy and it was, you know, adjacent to the sidewalks and trying to keep the mud off the sidewalks and that's why they put these wooden pipes. And so, a cypress pipe, which the guys got and I said, do not throw it away, so they're supposed to be cleaning it up for me. But there is still a piece and you can see the beveled end and stuff right next to the sidewalk.
And it was in really good condition actually, I mean, the only chip on the wood was them ripping it up because they didn't.
Know what it was.
Really know what it was until after the fact, but the parts that are still on the ground on each side of the box, you can see it and they're greatly intact and, I mean, it's made out of cypress and it was lined with like a creaseal, I believe is what it is. Yeah.
So, what I'm thinking about doing is maybe the piece that's still there, is going and dig some more and cut it and preserve it and maybe put it in a.
Cross section?
A glass, a glass container up in City Hall right here. So, I just gotta find time in the day to just make myself go and investigate that to see if I can do it.
Kelly's looking for my plexiglass that'll withstand the weight of a car.
Kelly, I hope he's coming to go over.
So, anyway, it has been very interesting, it's like a giant jigsaw puzzle as we go through downtown and, and we're kind of all geeking out on the history, but it is, it's well overdue and I think it's gonna be a beautiful project that we can all take part in when it's done, so thank y'all for your continued support of that. I'm gonna briefly, briefly touch on the church incident at Saint Mary Magdalene. I just wanna say, this was a, it could have been a very tragic event, it was very traumatic for those that were there with their families. I just want to say this was a, it could have been a very tragic event, it was very traumatic for those that were there with their families. And that, I, I was not there, but I was called and arrived at the scene right after, as the chief was apprehending the young gentleman that created the incident, but it was a great example of what happens when we act as a community and pay attention to what's going on and not afraid to offend each other and see something, say something, and it was not the police, it was not me. It was the people that were there in that church that stopped anything from happening, no matter what the intent was, it was people paying attention and caring enough to stop. And so I'm going to use that to try to light a fire back in our community about how do we put self-police, neighborhood policing and how that can really help with what's going on with pond because it could have been so much worse. And thankfully, everybody was paying attention, right? And I, I know Mr. Jean's daughter and her whole family was there and she's quite, you know, quite, I've been to Mass with her twice since and, you know, those, those, those individuals that were there were completely traumatized for it, but thankfully, the, the story is, they were their own heroes, right? And they spoke out, they spoke out and they spoke out.
And that could have made national news.
That's right.
So CBS and NBC.
So I just asked that if you'd keep everyone, the clergy that were there, as well as the families and our whole community in, in your prayers because it's going to take some time for those that were there to recover from that. But it's, it's a good story about our community, how we did so. And that is all I have right now, please, Chief, you're my party.
I have nothing, we were a little bit busy last week and, but we're, we're keeping up, a little short, people on vacation. A couple of them getting some kind of flu or something right now.
That virus coming out.
But besides that, we're doing okay, we're slowly catching up. Trying to get those two cars titled, so we waiting some checks.
So question, I know there was an incident last night where a stolen vehicle from the park
Yes, ma'am.
And I know you recovered it, did y'all make an arrest on it?
I don't think they did, what I understood is that the guy, right when they left, they went out of town, it was a deputy that found the car, but the car was by itself.
And where it was, is there cameras where they found it?
I'm not sure where they found it, it was, they gave you a name, but it wasn't a place that I recognized, it's out, it's out of town somewhere.
Go ahead.
I have some info, I don't know if you have it yet, but we got it on camera, some footage that they.
Oh yeah, they did, they did.
I checked with Chief last night and he sent the officers to A. Colwell, but I hadn't been able to follow up.
But they're supposed to find him on a flat job, it's clear.
It's clear we're on the flat job.
The person's face, the person's face?
I, I'm not quite sure Byron's in, in charge of that part of it, so.
But safety on duty tonight, so I'll get to go talk to him.
I was told that it might have been found at the end of MLK where there might be cameras, so you might just check on that, I don't know if that's.
Oh, there are cameras, but I, that's not what you told me, they give me a place out of town.
Okay. Is that it, Chief?
That's it.
Chief, go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Amity Road, did you see?
Irisland?
Amity, eight Amory, Amity.
Amish, okay, yeah.
It's on the Lafayette.
Yes, ma'am.
Am, Amistus.
Amish's.
Okay, Amistus, okay, you'll get it right, but this, but somebody, we, I had the city go and block it off. And a guy took his truck and backed it up and the guy, when he called me, he called the police and reported it. And he said he was waiting for somebody with your department to get back with him because they would ask the business across the street from there to see their camera. The police would go back and do, when they were open, would go back and ask the people to allow them to see their camera. He gave them the first three numbers of the license plate. Do you?
I, I don't know about that one, no, ma'am.
Okay.
No, sometimes we get two calls a day for a shift, sometimes we get thirty calls.
Less damage to city property, that's why.
They, they hit that, that barricade that you put, okay.
Because from the old car wash on Charity Street, they were having trouble on that road and the guy asked to put the barricade.
Yeah, I know the barricades.
Get them off the charity and Chris and the guys did. And then last week, somebody backed up, the guy said, back, just back clean. And he was able to get the first three numbers of the license plate and said that the police had told him they would do a follow up. He just told me this at our.
If he, if he called me, I can follow up and, and find out exactly what they found.
I'll tell him to get in touch with you.
For, next, I want to, I want to stop a note, I want to follow up with you on that list of properties that were damaged from the city from different crime incidents, I think we gave it to you at the last meeting in a folder, Chief brought it to us. And we never got to review it, so. Thank you. Is anything else for Chief? None? Chief Mayor?
The only thing I have is the, the guy that got the house next to the fire station across the body has started cleaning it up.
Hollowing it up.
And he's supposed to move it next week.
So you got your permit?
I have no.
I'm going to charge him for the permit, but he needs to come get one.
Okay. Are you going to get it?
Yeah, no, the house moved out.
Hopefully next week he's going to, he'll get it out there.
All right, any, anything else for Chief? Nothing? Meeting adjourned, oh, no, sorry, it's not adjourned.
Uh-oh, that's your line.
Council members comment, Councilman Hardy.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Bruce Or.
Day Lily, June first.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Bruce Or, just congratulations for all the graduates in twenty-four. Councilman Kim.
Not too many people here, but I just want to say that I'm not the court enforcement officer. When they see Brian Fisher taking pictures all over town, then, you know, I, I get called, what are they doing? So I, I'd just like for you to know that I'm not the court enforcement officer, I tell them to call Brian Fisher.
I get calls too and one of the things I say is, we put that position to keep politics out of us, right? And so that's the whole point, if, if, you know, if he writes you a ticket, I'm trying not to get involved because it's to make sure everybody's treated fairly and equally. We shouldn't pull the political screen. And I know not everybody feels that way, but that's why we, one of the reasons we're creating that position, so that has my end of it. So just not saying that, I'm just saying, keep politics out of us. All right, meeting adjourned.